Of Monday, July 17th, 2023 to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Reesner.
Let's take a moment to reflect on the importance of our work here today. May we be guided by wisdom and compassion as we make decisions that affect our community. May we be mindful of the diversity of beliefs and values represented here today. And may we work together to create a more just and equitable society for all.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Spar.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mansour.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
And Councilmember Perry.
At the record chair, all seven members of council are present. Minutes from July 3rd, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Any questions, corrections, deletions?
Madam President.
Yes.
I just have one small correction.
Yeah.
On the committee of the whole, Councilmember Mansour was present.
Okay, thank you.
In not being here, should be here.
Thank you, thank you, awesome. All right, we are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilmember Mansour.
No report, Madam President.
Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
No report, Madam President.
And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Spar.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee at the whole meeting? Okay, we are now under reports of the officers. Her Honor, Mayor Don Yonatunom.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. We have with us this evening Joe Crea from Raftellus to provide information and an update on our sewer rate study for the city of Tiffin. Also, our city engineer, Matt Watson, is also with us tonight to help answer any questions you may have. So, Joe, we'll turn it over to you. Thank you for coming.
Happy to be here. Thank you for having me. Hopefully, it will be quicker than Brent forecast.
I know, I was concerned when he said that.
But excited to be back with you all again this evening. We have just a few things to cover, and we were together over in the winter, but want to give an update on kind of the progress we've made since then. So, we'll share a background on the work and the, that we've been doing with city staff. We'll discuss the financial plan and what that will be as a look at the current updated financial forecast for the sewer enterprise. We did explore some rate increase scenarios based on new information, so we want to present those to you, and then we'll present our recommendation. So, my firm Raftellus, we do water, sewer, solid waste, stormwater rate studies all across the country. We do about five or 600 of these a year. I primarily work here in Ohio and the Midwest. Been working, fortunate enough to work with the city since about 2020. We were hired to do a rate study for the sewer enterprise at that time, wanted to understand the financial health of the utility, review the existing fees and charges, and, you know, project rates and charges that were going to help support operations and the completion of the long-term control plan. As you all know, 2020 brought with it the pandemic, which kind of turned the scope of our work on its head. In the middle of that, we did recommend a 10% rate reduction that was effective in July of 2020, and we recommended reducing the annual rate increases that had been in place, which were previously 5% per year, down to 4% per year. That was based on kind of the numbers that we had at the time, the estimated costs for completing the long-term control plan, and really where the revenues were headed. But things have changed since then, and that's why, that's why we're back in front of you A few big things, and this is no different than what I'm sure you've heard about a number of times here, and in just kind of managing your home budgets. Inflation has really hit the, the cost of the sewer enterprise and the capital needs pretty dramatically. We have additional clarification on kind of what the capital improvements are going to be. And so, we've got a simple table here that highlights our costs right now that we can tell are significantly higher than where they were when we did our original study in 2020, about a 40% increase overall. So, we're currently looking at $186 million investment. That is due to, again, higher inflation on just materials and supplies. Contractors are costing more because the federal infrastructure bill is pumping a whole lot of money into construction projects, which is great, but it also leads to scarcity of resources, scarcity of contractors, which kind of drives prices up. You can see a number of the main projects there. We're going to be talking about those specifically coming up, but, but this is really the, the primary driver of, of kind of why we've been paying close attention to this over the past few months with city staff. So, since I was last here, we have continued to work with staff, as I mentioned. Matt and his folks have done a whole lot in working with planning and design to get that underway for some of the very near-term capital projects. There's been discussions with Ohio State Revolving Fund officials to try to identify any opportunistic funding that's available. That can be grants or principal forgiveness, low interest, no interest loans, so constantly in kind of discussions to try to optimize whatever programs are out there. And then, we've also wanted to make sure we aligned our financial forecast with what happened in 2022, our actual revenues, our actual spending, and also make sure we were aligned with the current budget. So, let's take a look at kind of what that looks like and where that leaves us right now. When we think about the financial forecast, it's really driven by a number of inputs and some key assumptions. So, what our capital needs are over the next 10 to 20 years is important, and how we pay for them is probably the biggest driver. What our customer accounts look like, how much water they use, which indicates how much sewer we, we bill them for is very important. That's how we get our revenue. We want to understand what our operating costs are now and what they're going to be going forward, and we have to be mindful of what our financial policies are in terms of making sure we keep enough kind of cash reserves in the bank. So, we, we build a financial plan, and you'll see the, the summary of that here coming up. And really, what it is, we're taking all those different pieces and we're putting them into a blender, and we want to try to create something that comes out the end that, that's nice and clean and gives us that forecast of the revenue we're going to need in the future to help pay for all of our operating costs, our capital costs, make sure we're paying back any debt that we've borrowed, all while maintaining healthy cash reserves, making sure we have positive cash flows year over year, and by the way, keeping the rates as low as possible because we know our customers are feeling the pressure of, of the current rates. So, that's the, the process, you know, that there is some natural tension between some of those elements, and so, we need to balance each of those things to make sure we can put the city in the best long-term position. I talked about the, the capital projects, and you can see those presented graphically here. So, this represents the $186 million capital needs that, that we showed. As you can easily identify, the, the substantial bulk of that spending is going to occur in the next few years with the EQ Basin and a few smaller projects that are starting in the next couple of years, and then we have the, the main and Benner Interceptor project as well as some Phase 1 projects. So, a, a literal mountain of costs in the next three to four years. All of those are primarily driven by the long-term control plan, and we're kind of under orders to, to get those finished on that schedule. We then get a little bit of relief before the, the subsequent two long-term control plan projects are needed. You can see little spikes there in 2033, 2038. So, the, the big challenge is just kind of getting through the next few years, getting the revenue in the sewer enterprise to a point where it can support that cost, and then we are in a little bit more of a steady state sort of operations where we maintain the assets we have, reinvest in our existing infrastructure, but, but some, some major costs. I'm not sure, oh, those labels are just in millions, sorry, it's hard to read that up there. As, you know, we've looked at different ways to pay for these projects, obviously, given the magnitude, paying cash for all of that doesn't make any sense. We, you know, looked at revenue bonds, looked at other sources, but really, the Ohio program remains our best option. The, the federal infrastructure bill, while it has led to some inflation, it has also created more funding opportunities with the state. They are able to provide more kind of beneficial terms than they have historically, and that's, again, principal forgiveness, grants, low interest, no interest loans. There's no guarantee there, and they won't tell you too much of far in advance, but there are good opportunities there, and I know Matt and other city folks are working hard to try to get as much of that secured as possible. Usually, though, even without those programs, they offer below-market interest rates. They allow you to defer repaying for those loans during the construction period, and they also offer a program where we can defer any principal deferral on a project up to 15 years. And you'll see here on the next slide, I believe, how beneficial that last option is. So, we haven't assumed any principal forgiveness or grants or any, anything like that in our forecast, but we have assumed kind of leveraging that principal deferral option because that initial cost of those projects is so high. What we want to just try to do is buy us some time to let our rates more gradually get to where they need to be to support that annual principal and interest payment. So, here's, here's a lot of information here on this chart, and I kind of got a little wacky there. I don't know what's happening on my charts on the right, but I'll explain it, I'll talk you through it. I'm missing a couple of lines, too. Okay, so, the top is, is where we're at right now. If we have 4% annual increases, what's happening is we have a big spike in our costs that starts in 29 and 30. Can I, if I can use this to point, kind of see that pointer up there. Right about 28 and 29, the, the revenue line is more where this dark green for existing debt is, and it would go kind of straight across. Apologize that it's not showing up on this chart. We can get you a printed copy that'll look better. But what that means is we have significant cash flow deficits that are going to start in about five or six years, once the debt for the $150 million worth of projects comes due. And the chart on the right, which is really squeezed tight, it's showing that our cash on hand is dropping below our target. This one looks like a cliff. It's not quite that bad, but not, not much better. You can see by the end of this period, it would be at negative 264 days. We would be out of money and supposed to be kind of within 15 years under our baseline If we make one change, which is to defer the principal repayment on the two big projects that are upcoming, the EQ Basin and the Benner Interceptor project, you can see immediately there is a kind of flattening of what our costs are in this bar graph on the left. So, we've reduced what our obligations are to repay, and what that does is that allows us to kind of preserve some of our cash. So, we, we are still running negative cash flow deficits. We, we do still not make quite enough revenue to cover all of our costs, but we don't run out of money. And the indicator here in this graph would be, we've got 141 days left. So, at the end of this period, we still have money in the bank. We've used some of it, and that's okay. We're allowed to use that money. That money is there so we can kind of get through times when our rates aren't quite high enough, but there is a level that we want to maintain. We've tried to keep that around 360 days of cash, just given the scale of the, the capital needs. So, the, really, the takeaway is if we adjust those capital costs, that gets us about halfway there by doing that principal deferral, but we need to look at other revenue adjustments in order to kind of take care of the rest and get us back on track to where we want to be to make sure we're keeping the sewer enterprise on solid ground. So, we looked at a few different scenarios with staff, three to be kind of specific that we want to present to you here. The first is if we stick with our 4% annual rate increases, but do a one-time 9% increase, which would be effective next year in 2024, that kind of gives us an immediate boost to our revenue, and then we stay on the path that we're on. You can, you can see the effect that that has on a typical customer bill on the graphs at the bottom of this screen. That's for a customer that uses 800 cubic feet per month, or in a bimonthly period, excuse me, which is about 6,000 gallons. So, it takes their bill from, right now, they're paying a little over $93, and it would jump it up to $109.64 after that increase takes effect. So, a substantial increase there, and I think that's in 2026, so there's a couple extra years in there. So, a one-time increase. The other option as well, we know this cost is driven by the long-term control plan. We know there's a period in time where we need to just kind of cover that extra cost for those capital projects. So, what if we implemented a new charge? We've called it here, long-term control plan fee. It would be $12 per month. That would be a flat charge assessed to all customers starting in 2024, and then we would remove it in 2032, once we've kind of bridged the gap and our revenues are at the, the sustainable, stable level that we want to get them to. Beyond then, we would continue with the 4% annual increases that are currently approved. The third option, well, maybe past is indicative of where we should go in the future, and so, what if we revert to 5% annual rate increases that, that we had before the pandemic? What that does is that gives us the lowest near-term burden on our ratepayers. It, it stabilizes the sewer enterprise, provides us that kind of consistent adjustment in our revenue that, that we need to be able to manage through the projects. You can, you can tell a, a few different things there. If we do the long-term control plan fee option in the middle, that puts a, a pretty big burden on our ratepayers immediately. That charge in 2026 is $116.62, so more than the, the one-time increase, but it, it does drop off in 2032, but in that period in between, that's the, the most expensive option for our customers. The, the 5% increase keeps rates lower for kind of the longest period of time until the end, after you've got 15 years of, of kind of compounded adjustments in this cycle, but it's, it's keeping our rates as low as we can until we know more, you know, eight, seven, eight years from now, we'll know more, we'll have better visibility, there may be different options, and maybe we can change course at that time, but that's kind of where we're at. And so, where we landed, our recommendation, working with staff and, and just based on kind of exploring the options, is to revert to the 5% annual rate increases that were in the approved ordinance before the pandemic. This is going to give us the cash flow we need to be able to finance our capital projects. We're going to minimize the strain that we put on our ratepayers. We recognize that there is that, and so, we want to keep that as low as possible. Again, I apologize, this chart's not coming through cleanly here, but there's supposed to be a revenue line that's moving across there that shows we, we do use some of our cash reserves in that kind of years four through eight, but that's intentional. Again, we have cash in the sewer enterprise fund right now, and we, we do plan to use that intentionally, so it's, it's not by mistake. A few other things here before I open it up for discussion and questions. This is kind of the detailed cash flow. I know that's impossible to read on the screen. I did have some handouts. I don't know if those made it to you all ahead of time. If not, I have a few printed copies. What this shows is just the detail of the revenues under the recommended rate of 5%, reverting to the 5% change, what our expenses look like. So, we've got our operating expenses, and then we have to make sure we're paying our debt service costs, both the existing debt and the new debt that we will be issuing to pay for those projects. And then, in addition to that, we are going to pay for some of those projects with cash. We want to maintain a balance of borrowing for projects and funding projects with cash. We don't want to get over-leveraged. At the end of the day, what it is is sort of a balanced take, realize you cannot see the, the labels here. This chart in the middle, that's our cash reserves, and we're going to draw them down, but they're going to stabilize right where our target is. That's what this middle chart is showing us. All that's while trying to keep our customers' rates as low as we can, given the enormous amount of, of capital improvement costs increases that, that have been, you know, placed right in front of the city. So, what would those rates look like? This is our, just a table that shows our current sewer rates and where they would be in, on January 1, 2024, when the 5% rate increase would be made effective. Important to note, we're not asking for, for decision or vote today. We want to bring this in front of council so you can think about it and discuss it. Decision would be made as part of the budget process later this year, so no action needed today, but you can see the increase there. We've got two pieces to the rate structure. First is a bimonthly service charge. Everybody pays that. That's for access to the system, helps provide great revenue stability to the enterprise fund, and you pay that charge based on how large your water meter sizes. Most residential customers have a 5-inch meter and pay that smallest charge. In addition to that, you pay a volumetric rate for every unit of water that is consumed. It's 100 cubic feet, which equates to about 750 gallons. So, that would go from $7.34 to $7.71. And how does that kind of add up and compare? You know, when we look at what typical bills for communities around the state are, for a comparable level of usage of, again, 8 CCF, 800 cubic feet, Tiffin is right in the middle. This is with those potential rate increases that you're, you saw on the prior screen. So, literally, right in the middle of this chart, there is, you know, half a dozen above, half a dozen below. There are a few outliers down there, Finley and Bowling Green. I'd be careful not to, to focus too much on comparing yourselves to others. That may not indicate that they're better, that may indicate that they're not spending and reinvesting in their system the way they should. That may indicate problems and not things that are better, and Bowling Green, for instance. They also may not have any of the same issues that the city of Tiffin is dealing with. What I would say is, you know, a lot of the, the larger cities you see there, Akron, Cleveland, Cincinnati, they're all dealing with long-term control plans. They're in the middle of implementing billion-dollar programs, and you can see their rates are comparable, and, and in many cases, higher than what you're paying for here in Tiffin, and they have tremendous economies of scale upon which to draw. So, all things considered, you know, costs here, recognize that we want to keep them as low as possible, but it's comparable to what many other communities in the state are seeing. One thing I'll note as well, we partner with the America Water Works Association and the Water and Environment Federation, which are two national organizations for water and sewer industry folks, and we do a survey with them of all of the, the members. Over the last 20 years, we just kind of updated this, surveys on rates and what, what they charge our customers. Over the last 20 years, the average annual increase across the country is 5.5% per year. It's a little bit higher for sewer and a little bit lower for water, but it averages to, to about 5.5%. So, where the city's been is exactly in line with where the industry at large is, and that, those numbers were just reconfirmed a couple of months ago. Our latest results were, were published. So, our, you know, final thought would be that, you know, make sure that city continues to, to monitor the sewer enterprise fund and the financial status of it. As we get closer to getting bids for some of those large projects, make sure that's all contemplated in the financial plan. We want to consider future rate options as we move through this. So, I know we're going to be looking for other grant opportunities, principal forgiveness, other things that could be explored at a later date. We don't think the time is right now, but, you know, implementation of an impervious surface charge. So, that's a charge based on how much rooftops or concrete a parcel may have. What that does is that helps spread the cost of the long-term control plan to non-residential users. If you think about warehouses that have a bathroom, they don't pay much for sewer because they have a bathroom, but they contribute a lot of runoff that goes into the sewers that needs to be captured by the pipes that you're replacing and, and upgrading. So, that's a, a mechanism that some cities have employed, and it could be something we explore. Helps relieve some of the burden on our residential customers. We also plan to continue to kind of dialogue and think about customer assistance programs, different things that the, the city and the enterprise fund can do to help those folks that really need, need the assistance, disadvantaged customers that need help be able to pay for their water and sewer bills. So, that's kind of on our, looking forward, what we plan to help working with the city as we move through this. And that is all I've got, so I'll turn to the floor.
I just have some questions on a couple of graphs.
Yeah.
Just, can you go back to like your first one, the very first one? You had some numbers, there's a, keep going, keep going. One more back, I think. What are the, what are those top two numbers? I see that, I guess it's seven, like for 2026, I see 71, 70, 70, then you have 80.
So, it's, it's, it was supposed to be 71.8 million, but it's 71,770,887 and 2 cents.
Oh, so it's supposed to be all, it's not two separate numbers?
Yeah, I think the, sorry, I must have.
No worries.
Wrong setting when I sent it to the city.
Um, I got like two more questions.
Sure.
Then, out of money, what does that mean? Like, you have it like in parentheses, but like, what, what, what happens if out of money? So, if you go to the baseline.
Yeah, in reality, this wouldn't happen. This is sort of a hypothetical. I get to live in the luxury of a spreadsheet.
Okay.
In reality, you know, if the, if we got into that situation, the city would really be forced to do a pretty monumental rate increase to keep it whole.
And that's supposed to be millions up the side?
There's millions on the side, correct.
Gotcha. I got one more. Sorry. Can we go to the one where you had like comparison of Tiffin to other cities? There was something about storm charges.
Yes.
What, what does that mean? Like, what's a storm charge?
I, I talked about the impervious area charge on that last slide, so that's the way that Cincinnati and Cleveland do it. They have an impervious area charge. Lakewood there, they have an impervious charge, but it's just a, for residential customers, it's just a fixed $2 per month.
So, this is a charge that the city would place, like it's a, is it like?
Per charge.
Is it like runoff from a storm? Is it going to the storm sewer? Like, I'm, what a storm charge? That's something the city places, or?
Correct, yes. It would be something that the city would assess. These, the places that have them, kind of call them out separately from their water rates and their sewer rates, and then, you know, if you look at their website, there's water rates, sewer rates, and then there's stormwater charges.
Okay.
And it's really just to kind of indicate who's, who's trying to do that. And all of those places have long- And all of those places have long-term control plans, so they've got big buckets of cost that they're trying to recover from this different mechanism.
They add another charge to it.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Just on that point, are the stormwater charges you're talking about, are those only on customers that the water flow is in a separate stormwater system in the city? Or do some of that, do some of that money, or do some of the flow go into combined sewers and impact the sanitary sewer system?
Generally, the charges are assessed to everyone because the costs of the upgrades largely are spent on the core system, the large pipes and the treatment facility, which all customers share in. So from a cost justification standpoint, you can, you can make the argument that even if you live in a separate, separated system area and your runoff doesn't get into the combined sewer, the work that we're doing at the plant and in the big trunk interceptors is benefiting you. So those charges are generally assessed to all customers. Sometimes there's exceptions for nonprofits, churches, and schools, but that's sort of a different, different animal.
Back to the first one that you had, that you asked for back at the beginning with the years laid out. The costs that are laid out there, there you go. This entire row up to 2038, the costs that are laid out there are based on what things cost today.
Correct.
Okay, so we can expect those numbers to increase as we go along as we've seen?
We have added in an estimated annual inflation in here. So there is, and in the first few years, I think it was 5% per year, and then it dropped down to maybe more historic 2% to 3% per year. So that is accounted for in these numbers. Great question. Sorry, I should have mentioned that.
Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. I know you mentioned that loan that we want to take advantage of with the 15-year deferral. What is the likelihood of us getting that? Like if we were to move forward today with the project, would we be accepted for that or?
Yeah, and I know Matt's had conversations. He may be able to speak to it more directly. I think that is an option that's, the state has pretty much indicated the city could exercise that right if they wanted to.
Yeah, and I'll follow up. So that is that WPCLF loan. So that is what we've already pursued for the construction loan for the CSO 24 and 30 project, as well as the planning loans for the EQ basin, the main and banner interceptors, as well as the Phase 1 project, the CSO 9 through 13 and 15. We spoke with WPCLF. They won our business because even though it's below market rate, there's money to be made. So on the CSO 24 and 30 project, just an update for city council, we've had our bid opening for that project. Our construction contract bid came in just over $3 million. We did receive that $4 million in principal forgiveness for that project. So what we were able to do was bring the design and the consulting services that we'll have during construction into that loan as well, and we were still about 186,000 below that $4 million in principal forgiveness. So that $4 million principal forgiveness we got, we're going to go through that first project in the long-term control plan. It's not going to cost us a single dollar. So we are working with WPCLF with these planning loans. We know each other very well over the last six months, and we've really built a relationship with them. And I think the expectations there that the city's going to continue to work with them, apply for construction loans, apply for design loans. So yeah, we will, we will get that. The deferred option, we just have to show them what Joe basically is already showing you. If we can move forward with that deferred option, it keeps our rates as low as possible, less burden on our users. So as long as we show them that data, they'll work with us towards setting up that system. So we're going to continue to apply for principal forgiveness. The only, you know, caveat that we have ahead of us is, as Joe showed, all of our projects are kind of happening at the same time. So we can only get one principal forgiveness per year. So, you know, we're kind of going to be competing against ourselves, so we got to look at, you know, what the timeline is that we have to get the project completed by the Ohio EPA, as well as when we're going to apply for each one of these projects and be as strategic as possible, and making sure that we can meet, you know, both the deadline plus make sure that we are pursuing as much principal forgiveness as possible. But that 4 million is the maximum amount that you can get per project. So, you know, the 4 million on the $3 million project, that's great. 4 million on a, you know, a $40 million EQ basin, it's going to be helpful, but you're still going to have to borrow, and it's not going to change that, you know, long-term payment quite as much.
Yeah, obviously, deferring 15 years of payment would be huge. If for some reason we don't get that option, would that mean the rate would have to go up even more, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, I think if that's not something the state's willing to do, then we would need to reevaluate.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Thacker. I'm just curious if you have other cash flow models for the other options as well. While I'm leaning, you know, following your advice, you guys are the experts, I just would be curious to see what the other ones look like in terms of cash flow.
Yeah, we did run those, and we can definitely kind of follow up afterwards and send things through staff to get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mary.
Just to go back with the history just a little bit, when I first became mayor, within weeks, the city team were meeting, and they're coming to me, and they're very concerned that we're not going to make it. And so when I was trying to figure out a budget, I was also freaking out and trying to figure out how the heck are we going to take care of the sewer plan? And so we had quite a few meetings for months, and then we got to the point where maybe we better be calling Joe to see how bad we really are, because we thought we were going to have to really make a drastic jump like now. And so we were somewhat, not a good way to put it, but we're pleasantly surprised that if we went back to our original five that we were doing in the first place and just go back and re-implement that, we would be in pretty decent shape. And so that's why we're recommending the 5% because it's what we were doing. We backed it off for COVID. We need to get back on that or we're going to end up in the hole. And we did look at the other ones, because Kathy and I were kicking around like, could we do a $3 charge per month? Just wasn't enough. And so this one just seemed like the less painful way to go to keep us where we need to be. And Joe, I really appreciate you, you know, once again, trying to explain this to everybody in ways we can understand it, because it's a little complicated. But it's been a long year, you know, trying to figure out if we were okay. And, you know, Matt was concerned, Kathy, and it looked a lot worse last fall, and so I'm glad it's not as bad as we thought it was going to be.
And another thing I want to promise everyone is that we're going to be good stewards of, you know, our residents' dollars. So, you know, the one thing that I'm adamant about is that we need to continue to engage with Joe each year, continue to update that model. We have, you know, projects ahead of us that have very large dollar amounts, but all those are right now are estimates. So as those dollars continue to come in in a more, you know, fine-tuned number, we need to continue to implement that into the model and do our residents' right by looking at that model to make sure that, you know, we are not overcharging as well. You know, this, as I said, you know, the CSO 24 and 30 project, that's a success. It's not going to cost us anything. When we originally were starting to put things together, we thought, you know, that was going to cost us $5 million. We didn't have that principal forgiveness in there. We were borrowing that for a long term. You know, I want to give kudos to Brandon and the Public Works Department. We had a backflow preventer project that was required of us to be completed by this July. They took that project on in-house, did it themselves. When we worked with MS consultants in Raftellus in the last year and brought the dollar amounts that were in the long, original long-term control plan, which were in $2,015, and brought them up to today, and then prorated them out to the actual year of implementation, that project that Public Works did internally had an estimated cost of about 1.6 million. I can tell you, we didn't come anywhere close to that. So just in those first couple of projects alone, we've saved millions of dollars. But as Joe showed on the screen, you know, over the next three, four years, that's a majority of that $180 million ahead of us. So we got to make sure we're set up and we're prepared to get through that. But by the time those projects are over in 2028, 2029, we have a programmatic review with the Ohio EPA where we evaluate whether we were successful in those projects and whether we're on the right track to meeting the overall compliance of four overflow events per year. And by 2030, if we know we're in good shape and we just have those two smaller projects ahead of us, at that time's where I think we can start wiggling and, you know, and making those decisions to hopefully pull some things back.
Also, we've had a lot of conversation about downspouts, and it seems like it's not that big a deal, and why are we worrying about downspouts? The more downspouts we get out of there, the better we're rated, the better we're doing, and our costs go down. And so that's why that downspout conversations we keep having is really such a big deal. And also wanted to point out for Councilmember Perry and Jones, you might remember that we always kept talking March 1st. This would be implemented January 1st. It's easier for finance to just go ahead and start it in January. So if you're wondering about that shift in time, that's where that's coming from.
Councilmember Reesner.
I'd be interested to see if it could be ran as a 4.5% increase, what the numbers would come out to be on the graph, kind of piggybacks off of Councilmember Thacker's question.
Yeah, I think we'd be definitely willing to kind of run through a few different options. That's, I think, the reason why we're coming to you now and not in October.
Councilmember Perry.
Just have a curiosity question. How, like, obviously, this graph is till 2033. How long do we plan to, how long do we have Raftellus, I guess, as consultants? Are you going to be along the whole journey with us, or do you get us through the big projects and then, you know, kind of hand it off or?
Well, I don't want to go anywhere. I won't be retired by then for sure. The, so the tool, the printout you're seeing, it's just a spreadsheet model. The city does have copies of that, so that is a form of deliverable of the work we've done. You know, y'all can run it as well. I know Matt has run it. And so that is kind of a tool that you can use now, anytime in the future, and kind of keep it up to date. We're more than happy to kind of come in and look over your shoulder and just bring any perspectives that we can. So I think we're, we have all intentions to be around in 2033. If we're not, kind of, the city does have that tool that you can run and do it yourself. I know Matt's familiar with it in a worst-case scenario as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Mary.
I know he's willing to run those numbers, but I really thought, Kevin, we were going to be at easily 8%, 10% of a hike. And so I don't think the 4.5% is going to get us there. The 5, we really looked at long and hard to see what was the least we could do to get us there, and the 5 is already pretty much there, because we thought we were going to be way higher than that. That's how bad it was looking.
Any other questions? Turn it back to you.
That's it. Anything else for Mr. Kria? Thank you so much for coming up.
Thank you all, of course, yeah.
If you want, you can sneak out. We don't pay any attention to people that leave. We let them. So I promised I would keep everything very short tonight, because we knew we had a very important conversation to have. Just going to point out two upcoming events this Thursday. The 20th is our third Thursday event, Christmas in July downtown from 5 to 8, and the Seneca County Fair opens July 24 through the 30th. And so that concludes my report.
Awesome, thank you. Questions for the mayor? All right, thank you very much. We're moving on to Clerk of Council Anne Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the financial report for the end of June 2023. Total receipts for the month were $4,193,258.84. Total expenses for the month were $4,397,639.46. The general fund unincumbered balance was $5,135,401.55. Income tax receipts for June 2023 were $1,019,283.33. That was a decrease when comparing June 2023 to June 2022 of $4,343.77. Annual year-to-date receipts are down 3.74%. 0.25 portion, 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for June 2020-23 was $124,753.94. The unexpendanted balance for all funds was $38,197,174.47, which is the same as the bank balance is for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Councilmember Reesner.
I move to accept the Finance Director's report for month ending June 30 and bank reconciliation.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second to accept the Finance Director's report and bank recon for the month of June? Councilmember Mansour, thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
He'll report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. We are now under written communications.
We have Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-21, to amend the budget ordinance 22-108, to appropriate funds into the police, fire, and parks budgets.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-21, is prepared for tonight as ordinance 23-46.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-22, to amend the budget ordinance 22-108, to appropriate funds into the park budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-22, is prepared for tonight as ordinance 23-47.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-23, to amend the budget ordinance 22-108, in order to allow additional funds to be appropriated in the budget for the Intugent Drivers Alcohol Treatment Fund and approve the transfer of $60,000 to the Municipal Court Probation Fund.
Finance Director's request for legislation, number F23-23, is prepared for tonight as ordinance 23-48.
And that concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Seeing none, we are now under motions. Councilmember Thacker.
I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance number 23-41 in the following places. I would like to amend the title to say "two" instead of "three" streetlights. Paragraph one, "two" instead of "three" streetlights, and section one, "two" instead of "three" streetlights. Additionally, delete the second of three AEP polls and delete the final one substituting 440B424.
Thank you. There is a motion to amend ordinance 23-41 as described. Is there a second? Councilmember Spar.
I'll second her motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Any other motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 23-24, introduced by John Spar. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Tracy Citizen Stark to serve an unexpired term on the Seneca County Board of Health from the effective date of this resolution until December 31, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the second reading of resolution 23-24.
Ordinance number, amended ordinance 23-41, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing installment of two streetlights on South River Road Trail at or near the River Overlook and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 23-41.
Ordinance number 23-42, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending section 135.13 of Tiffin codified ordinances, updating the city's fixed asset policy by increasing the amount for a capital fixed asset from $2,500 to $5,000 and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 23-42.
Ordinance number 23-45, introduced by John Spar. Ordinance authorizing the sale of lot number three, 4.908 acres, more or less of Eagle Rock North subdivision plat in Eagle Rock Business Park at $15,000 per acre, and granting an option to. in Eagle Rock Business Park at $15,000 per acre and granting an option to purchase Lot Number Two, 8.732 acres, more or less, to AFLP LLC or its designee as approved by the mayor.
Thank you. This is the second reading of Ordinance 23-45.
Ordinance Number 23-46, introduced by Kevin Reese. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $7,912.73 of donations into the police, fire and park budgets.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-46. Councilmember Reese.
I move for the immediate passage of Ordinance 23-46 suspending city council's three-reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance 23-46. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reese.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
And Perry.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Reese.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
And Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-46 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 23-47, introduced by Kevin Reese. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $3,533.1 into the park budget for the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission and summer camp programs.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-47. Councilmember Reese.
I move for the immediate passage of Ordinance 23-47, suspending, uh, city council's three- reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance 23-47. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reese.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
And Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-47 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 23-48, introduced by Kevin Reese. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $60,000 of additional funds into the Indigent Drivers Alcohol Treatment Fund and a transfer of $60,000 into the Municipal Court Probation Fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-48. Councilmember Reese.
I move for the immediate passage of Ordinance 23-48 suspending city council's three-reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 23-48. Councilmember Spar.
I second that motion.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Reese.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
And Perry.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Reese.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
And Perry.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-48 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
And that concludes the ordinances.
Thank you. Um, we are now under other business. One announcement that I had for this evening was regarding the purpose of the special meeting on Wednesday. We have, um, an additional purpose will be to discuss, uh, the contract of meter investments. Um, so we will add that to the agenda for the discussion. Is there anything else to come before council this evening? Councilmember Perry.
Just had a question, uh, maybe for Nick, just for my information. Um, ordinance, uh, 23-46, we received all the donations. Um, is there any stories behind, um, any of these donations or where they came from? Obviously, I see like we got 4,600 from Tiffin Ambets. Do we know what that was from or did they have a fundraiser or something?
I think they normally give us part of their, um, what they do for bingo.
Okay.
I think it's what they, yeah, they give us a portion of that.
And then the other two, like Dorothy Vares, I didn't know if that was like someone that.
Um, yeah, that was for the fire department and, and we had performed some life-saving things for her.
That's awesome.
Family. Yep.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other business to come before council this evening? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Talking about the donations, 23-46, we used past, it's nice to see the people and businesses are generous in their donations. So I wanted to thank them for that. I drove by the South River Road improvements and I noticed it looked like railings are going up. I'm just curious, I guess, and public may be curious, is that going to be a railing or a overhang or? Looked like some posts were going up all the way around that concrete pad on South River Road.
Yes. City engineer.
Yeah, there will be a railing on three sides of that new overlook. It'll be a cable railing. Um, so what I've heard though is that not all the material came in correctly on the order. Um, so it might not be completed, you know, as quickly as what it's appearing, but it's in progress to be completed in the very near future.
Okay. And then for my benefit, and I keep saying the public's benefit, there's debris in the river on the south side of the river by Jefferson Street. How it got in there, I don't know. I'm just curious, is that an improvement or is that a dumping ground? Or what if these piles of debris?
Um, I'm not certain. And if, it doesn't look like city administrator, mayor, or where, we can come back to you on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can get back to you on, on that. Uh, if you'll check with me afterwards, we can talk about where that's located exactly and.
Okay.
I'll look into it.
Well, well, next time you go down and look at that poll for the streetlight on the vi duct, you can't miss it. So, but yeah, we'll talk after the meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business to come before council? Okay, seeing none, we can adjourn. Thank you, guys.